Yes.
Cause it doesn't look like you have a specific agenda, however. Patrick, do you have a preference on what order we want to have these items in?
Yes, I would like to do the NAC land, the land funding first. As that is the student organizer approval.
And then move over to the resolution.
Move with resolution and then um the newly added a budget approval that we had in consideration.
Okay, does anybody have any problems with that agenda for today's meeting? Do I need to motion to approve that?
I have motion here. I motion we approve the agenda for the special session.
Seconded.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Alright, we'll go ahead and move forward with that agenda then.
It will be the spreadsheet.
So I'll pass it over to you, Patrick, to cover the funding for NAC land.
Yes, can you go to the NAC one? Alright, let's have, I say I'm Brandon Alas. Okay. Alrighty, so for NAC land, we have on last week Wednesday, we had a vote to approve this within the um budget committee. So the approval is going to be for NAC land, which is whatever fraternity is here on campus. They're going to be have a kids festival hosted for all of the Denver community within university. Um so they asking for a total of one thousand four hundred seventy nine dollars and thirty two cents. Which is eagerly close to their um max approval and this would be for an event. So I needed to present this to a council, if there's any questions about it, any others present within the budget committee. Um so we can go ahead and prove this.
Perfect, any questions, comments, concerns on this funding presentation?
Did they present us?
Yes, it was a video presentation, which according to the guidelines, they can submit. Um but I did, I did, we did have one question and just to just double check here um with you, Armando. So um it was, it came to my attention that last year we had, they had us fund for their NAC land likewise, but it was canceled. So we asked um one of the individuals from the fraternity to see if they still had received the money, just that they did not receive the monies. Do you recall anything?
Uh yes, I I remember them. We came and we did the deposit for the event and for the materials, but it never got paid, so the entire thing was canceled. So theoretically, yes, they did not receive the money.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I would just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure that we have the same understanding.
Yep.
But that was only concern that we had as far as everything else, I, you know, per like budget committee procedure, they passed and followed through, so we're just waiting for approval for the whole council on this subject.
Is there any other other questions or concerns? Do you have a motion on the floor?
Motion to vote?
Motion to vote?
Motion to vote or to approve?
To approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Let's start.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Perfect, the funding for NAC land is approved. Now we can move to the other one.
Okay. It's gonna be for the call for resolution, the one that Sam the chat loud. Probably in the week, it was in the main chat. Thank you to everybody who was here, guys, thank you, guys. Someone that Matthew sent, I think is someone that's gonna everyone to be able to see.
Did you get that, huh?
Yeah. Spelled.
You vote?
To me?
Oh, yes, I did vote. It's hard to be on that, no. They have maker.
This, this one may be subject to change as or something else is going on similarly. Uh so this is resolution to mobilize SGT SAC car around campus authored by Patrick Severa, Dorce, Luisa, and Javier Gomez. Abstract, this resolution seeks to enhance the student advocacy councils, SGT SAC, engagement with the Metropolitan State University Denver campus community through the strategic deployment of a mobile engagement card. This initiative aims to increase awareness of SGT SAC, promote upcoming elections, facilitate contributions, contributions to Student Emergency Fund, a designated local nonprofit organization via scanable QR codes. Incentives included refreshments and a raffle for semester parking pass will be offered to encourage interaction. Whereas the mission of this, of the Metropolitan State University Student Government, the Student Advocacy Council is practically addressing the evolving needs of MSU Denver student body by advocating for the best interest and enriching their diverse experience and opportunities. Whereas actively promoting SGT SAC initiatives, including elections and council activities will foster stronger connection and greater awareness among the student body. Whereas utilizing mobile engagement cards staffed by council members will not really like, will be staffed by when not driven and an advisor authorized to operate the vehicle and the riding mouse app will provide a visible and approachable means of outreach across campus. Whereas the mobile big, mobile engagement card will feature QR codes providing direct access SGT SAC social media platforms informing regarding upcoming elections and opportunities to contribute to the Student Emergency Fund and a local nonprofit organization. To incentivize, whereas to incentivize engagement, refreshments will be offered and a raffle for a semester parking pass for a subsequent semester will be conducted. Participation in the raffle will require following SGT SAC's social media account with an option to receive additional raffle entry upon making a donation to either Student Emergency Fund or Designated Local Nonprofit with the maximum of two entries per individual. Whereas documented outreach activity through photography and videography for a social media feed on SGT SAC social media platforms will enhance the council's online presence and community engagement. Whereas successful, successful execution of this initiative necessitates a rental of a golf cart, engagement rowdy to mascot, the procurement of refreshments, snacks, Gatorade, mini sodas and water, and the provision of semester parking pass as a raffle prize. This PR event is scheduled to take place on April sixteen, two thousand twenty five. Therefore, be resolved, the student advocacy council hereby approves the mobilization of the SG mobile engagement cart across all right campus in Oria on April sixteen, twenty twenty five. So one key, quick thing I wanted to quick, like ask, because Sam put into the chat that we already have like, like an elections card already preserved. I wanted to ask if maybe we could join, address that. Questions?
Uh what?
Um. So you're saying Sam already has an election card, I mean a card reserved that the fun regarding that, the funds, they uh he already paid for that, or is that what you're asking, like? So we don't spend money on the reservation of the card, or what do you mean? Like that's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, so my, so I this, I wasn't aware of that budget card, of I mean of the elections card until today. So my initial thought was that we rented a golf cart, you know, to do the whole idea, but now that this has come, I wanted to see maybe we could rather than making it two separate events and just making it one whole event. And, you know, adjusting the writing to that resolution.
It's.
Um Armando, just for clarification, what does this Sam and what's it needs to do and Sam reserve the golf cart for besides today?
Uh we reserved it for today and I believe Thursday.
Okay, so it would be.
Um but ju- but just so you know that there was no money spent on that.
It doesn't cost anything to reserve it, right?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's semi eyes golf cart, so I just had to put it in ourselves.
Oh. Add a call. Well, because this is before. So this was, yeah, this was, so this was initially to be like a totally different event. But I didn't, I wasn't aware that we already had golf carts and things already reservoir, resorted. Before. Reserved, yeah, reserved, from to my knowledge.
I wonder then if this might be better in a separate week, since we're already using the golf cart twice since we promote elections?
Maybe doing it for like next week, what's next week?
Well, elections are over on Friday.
Well, this, the, the purpose of this one was really promoting our, ourselves to the students. So essentially, it was a tabling, like a table event that we usually do, like rap and go. Like all these other ones that we try and getting everyone involved. But rather than just like, you know, staying seated, we're able to be a little bit creative, take from that creativity of going around campus and just having like, bigger engagement of like, you know, like I said, of taking a video, having people follow us on Instagram. You know, promoting, oh, we also have elections, we also have these donations, a raffle.
I have a student.
This is just a point of clarification, Patrick, so um you are looking to do this to get the word out about just T SAC and to support the Student Emergency Fund, right?
Hmm, and a local nonprofit organization, so this is, for me, it's much more of a
Okay.
good way of interacting with, you know, everyone on campus. Even though things are like, kind of, you know, before finals and everything, you know, just trying to get around campus and letting people know who we are.
So again, just related to that, that is your intention that members of T SAC would be on the golf cart, or Armando, or I would be driving? And am I running over students? Am I?
Yes.
Um, how are you engaging students if the idea is to stop in places and then sort of set up a shop wherever that is?
GTA. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
GTA.
Get out of here.
We get uh Steven running over students before GTA six.
We put, we put, we put five stars on, on the cost.
Um. Serious question.
Yes.
Why don't we use this to promote one Earth Week, since it's next week, right?
Mm-hmm.
Two, promote Road Runners After Dark, three, promote Food For Finals.
Is it core? The core, that's the order.
Ah.
Okay.
Earth Week.
Well, he, so he, so here's what, my, my.
Um, right there, I have to agree with Will, cause I think that would be a good advantage to promote Earth Week and Food For Finals.
Hmm, yeah, and that, that, and yeah, and the same, and that's, that's my whole purpose of the golf cart. It's a way to promote ourselves, our events, or things are going on within campus. Rather than just being tabling, you know, we can get people's attention, we have rowdy, snacks, we have prize, you know, prizes, so people can, are encouraged to come and come talk to us. Um and that way, if people follow us on social media, we can, it will help us promote more events easier. So, you know, could we have more people who are actively on campus, cause we have like four hundred and something followers on MSU on our Instagram page? And I'm not sure how many of those are alumni already, or how many of those are active students. And if they're not following us already, you know, how can we get them to follow us?
I have the.
Can we just promote stuff without putting resolutions down?
I was gonna ask that too, but.
Hey, you can, you, unless you're spending actual funding, uh and that was more of a precedent. You can essentially, uh we don't have to do a resolution, but you can just organize it through your various committees.
Patrick?
For this one specifically, since, cause I'll be buying like a prize and all that, that, that's why we have to make this one a specific resolution.
All the parking pads.
Uh-huh, and that was my way to like incentivize people, like if anyone hears like, hey, you can get a semester parking pass, like that sounds to me like pretty incentivizing.
Um.
You need to make sure that you make it clear that it's for next semester.
Yeah, yeah.
And then how are you going, like, the raffle is gonna be based on like whoever follows us, or is it gonna be?
Take flyers. So you, in order to receive a raffle ticket, you have to follow us on Instagram, and then if you want to get an additional raffle ticket, you have to um donate to either the not emergency fund, or to the emergency fund or to a local profit on the QR codes. And you can only get two raffle tickets at max.
I just wanted to float an idea real quick. What if we added slightly more to the requirement than just following us on Instagram?
Well, I was thinking of an additional one, like, cause I wanted to make it like, so we have like a, like a live or like at least like post reels like on Instagram or, or make a TikTok and just like record people asking them questions or whatever. And then we can promote that into our, so we can have like more interactiveness, like showing our student engagement on our social media.
Okay, I was thinking, oh, sorry.
Well.
I was thinking maybe like sign up for another or something. Is that too much? Like sign up for, go to or, or sign up for, for finals or not sign up?
Like Road Runners After Dark.
Road Runners After Dark or.
The only problem with that.
That, that you exclude people who aren't able to attend those.
Well, and Road Runners After Dark is the only one that you could actually physically sign up for. Earth Week you can't sign up for, you just show up, same with Food For Finals, you don't sign up for it, you just show up.
What about taking flyers? Here are three flyers, take.
You mean like giving them like an additional responsibility that they may have to do?
Well, it's like for the raffle, you take a, uh here, take some flyers and sign up or, or follow us on Instagram.
I think we could address, maybe we could do something like that, or we can have it like um, they follow us on Instagram and they can vote if they have voted. And then if they have, they have voted, then we can do something like that.
Well, that's next week, right?
Well, here, here, I guess my big question right now is like, were you guys thinking of, cause I was thinking with this, since we already have a golf cart idea, that to just do both of them? Or would you guys like suggest that we make this a whole event on its own? As it was, cause initially I had it for the fourteenth, for the sixteenth of April.
I think it would be helpful to get Sam's opinion.
Cause Sam, Sam did say, so I'll talk to Sam, and there's a question for you, Armando, you said I couldn't be on it since since I'm a candidate, but what if?
He, his understanding was that you were trying to promote yourself. Uh so if that's not the understanding and you are basically, he's, he just didn't want it to be that you were promoting elections and then it been about, oh yeah, go ahead, vote for me, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Hmm.
But if this is after election, then it doesn't even matter.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so let's make it a whole event on its own now, right, let's postpone it for like the next week.
Sure.
And then you have to just amend that to the resolution now.
Yeah.
You gotta put it the same week as Earth Week, so what day are you working?
What day? Yeah, like we can do it the day before or two days before.
It's the whole week.
The whole week.
However, the weird tabling is on Wednesday, however, there's events each day.
We possibly do Monday.
I would like to hear from Susana on her opinion whether or not we should try to push the events more as a requirement for the raffle. Instead of just here, follow us on Instagram.
Um, Patrick, you still wanna continue with the idea with the parking pass?
Hmm.
Um, and then I think Will does have a point right there, because like a parking pass is kind of expensive, even though we're just getting one. We do want these like requirements to like, we don't want.
Making like worth it.
Yeah, I'm like, oh, I got this parking pass, cause I was able to get involved for a little bit. Or even like helping us, helping us out through Food For Finals or something like that. Looking for volunteers to like, who could like help us hand out food, cause that's something I noticed from last semester. We had like, we had, obviously, we're all students and we all have different schedules, but sometimes not all of us can be there at the same time, or like we have a class at a certain time, that could probably help us too. Like a requirement there.
Well, I had an additional, I had an additional idea, but this one was gonna be a little bit more complicated, which is why I didn't wanna go with it, but the other idea was that we could make it like essentially if we could announce like a raffle, instead of making the raffle then there, we can announce it. And if you follow us on social media, you can be staying engaged of which events, you can go attend and, and receive a raffle. So for each attend, for each venue attend, it'll be a raffle to joins and, you know, for to get that parking pass, and it'll be one that's sponsored by T SAC, and it doesn't have to necessarily be just ours, it can be any, any clubs. And they just give out like a raffle and they give it to us at the end of the day, we give them like a little jar or something. But that was the idea I had, but I was just sort of like cause it's a little bit bigger than just, just the what are your thoughts?
Um, did someone else raise their hand?
I, I have Steven and Victor with their hands up, but it was about something different than the current question on the floor.
Um, they could go first.
Um, I, I do think, I don't know, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I think me and Susana might be on the same page for that, for the requirement for the, to be entered into the raffle. Have them like at least, I don't know. Maybe not giving them the flyers a, a bad idea, like a physical, like here, you have to take a physical flyer one of these events that you're interested in and following us, but you do bring up a point, maybe that's pushing it a little bit too much for students, like, I don't want no flyers or something. But then I'm like, damn.
Well, what do you think of, what do you guys think about my other idea, that we talked to, rather than to everyone else, we go to, we announce the raffle, promote that, and then we talk, reach out to other clubs or say, hey, we guys have an event. If someone comes up, I don't know, shows up, shows like a say, we do like a social media, they have to follow us and then we send them like DM them like a photo of like the raffle and they have to present that to the people, or I don't know, learn it or get the raffle ticket, you know, something like that.
That would be.
Sorry. I do also have Matt with his hand up, I don't know Matt, if it was addressing this specific one or to the topic, but.
Well, I guess I wanna start by saying that I do like the basis's idea, cause it would allow us to hit other areas of campus that don't get a lot of attention. Um as far as the like prize and requirement piece, what if we'd lower the prize, like to a week long parking pass or like a month pass? Cause instead of increasing the ass to match the prize, why don't we bring the prize down to match?
I mean, I could definitely see that. I am trying to put myself in their shoes and be like a week would be nice, but I just feel like you're, you're, you're saying a whole semester pass, right? That is very enticing, I feel, for any student.
Exactly.
That's hundreds of dollars in savings for them.
And that's why.
So wouldn't you approach a cart if you had that opportunity?
I think I would be much more inclined to.
Ten events.
At, at whatever the asking is, as long as it's not crazy and it requires me to do like go to a lot of places or something like that, I mean, like if I was a student following T SAC and like signing up for something or, or like taking flyers for events coming up that are sponsored by T SAC would be I don't think that is a big ask personally, if it's a whole semester pass.
Well, flyers.
Okay, before we get to the weeks, Victor and Steve will wait for a minute to share their thoughts, we have to get to them.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you're not going to do it this winter, are you gonna do it? Are you gonna extend it? So we're going to semantics not be the best thing for this agenda. Maybe we could go to, whatever's next on the agenda, just so we don't. I don't want to.
I don't think.
Is this, I don't think it's any.
There's, there's, no.
I just have to approve the recent from the budget committee.
I think it would take a while though.
Could wait till five, cause I don't know.
True, that is true.
Um, Stephen.
This is a completely separate point, but just something to consider. Remember, there are only ten of you. There are about nine active delegates and. Okay, fine.
Alright.
We're not meeting.
Locked.
Alright, they're good.
Anyway, um, what I'm trying to say is that there, time is ticking and I think T SAC to me is already seem to commit to Earth Week, so my recommendation to you all is if you do this, and I really like the idea, Patrick, maybe you move it to not next week, but that week after, so you can do stuff say Monday, Tuesday, even Wednesday, leading into Road Runners After Dark. And so there, time wise, there may be some more flexibility with that week. Instead of trying to cram it all during uh ra- during uh Earth Week, but that's Patrick, that is nearly a suggestion, and that is a suggestion for the entire body here.
Uh, I see Matt with a hand.
If you wanna do a raffle setup with extra staffs, if we wanna, we could just promote Earth Week and each event you go to, you can earn another raffle ticket.
True.
Yeah, that, that was what I was saying. That, that we just give them tickets and then we have give them a jar. And each student that goes to those gets raffle tickets. Yeah, we just have to reach out to the other clubs and orgs, which is why, you know, cause, so we do like I don't wanna make it just a T SAC thing. The, are you guys saying just exclusively to our events, Matt?
I see, I.
Or go to like.
So there's multiple events going on throughout the entire week, like there's like there's like documentary showing, there's like build your own like toe bag and stuff like that, there's a all this kind of thing, so there is events people can attend, which they can earn a a raffle ticket. We're supposed to have a meeting this week sometime with Earth Week, but yeah, we didn't, um. So I could tell them that we want to host a T SAC raffle where we want them to follow us on Instagram and attend an event. If they follow us on Instagram, they get a raffle ticket, if they attend an event, they get a raffle ticket. And we collect the raffle tickets at every event, and at the end of the week, we pick some money.
The only issue with that is we're only tabling one day at Earth Week. But I thought what you were referring to is like if we just do it at each of our T SAC events for the rest of the semester, so like we can give out raffle tickets at our tabling at Earth Week, we can give out raffle tickets at the culture fashion event, we can give out raffle tickets at RAB. And then after each of those events, like end of April, then we can do a drawing for it, and it's just to encourage them to interact, which is what I thought you were saying, if that's not the case, then.
I do think, since we're give, we're giving out a good prize, I think this is a really good prize, that'll catch the attention of a lot of students. I think we should use this opportunity to promote more than just one of them personally. Like Food For Finals and maybe road, I, I can, I don't know, I think we should promote Road Runners After Dark.
My idea, so like, if you think about it, um is, so each person that stops by to the cart will be following T SAC. Or put them as like priority or like, you know, top notice. Right, so and you get notification when, when there's a new post, and then we can post our events there as well, so won't be simply just at the cart, it'll be for like the rest of the time that they're following T SAC. They'll be getting these announcements. With addressing the, that, that's addressing that one, with addressing the Haley's, yes, but I also was thinking maybe we could collaborate with other closing organizations as well. Just having them within, not just our T SAC events, but also like other people's events as well for the students.
Well, I only see one potential issue with the collab, the collaboration piece. If you're trying to pass this for next week, you're again doing a lot of cramming last second and maybe a lot of orgs just won't be able to work with you, cause it's very last second. So if you're going down, I would say if you wanna go down that route, if we wanna go down that route, we should, like Steven said, push it off not to next week, but the week after, it just really depends on what you're trying to do.
Then I think.
The only problem with the week after is that you have both culture flash, you have Road Runners After Dark in that same week, but Patrick.
So then let's go with Haley's now, because we don't have to reach out to so many individuals who already have within our own events are lined up, which could be Earth Week. And would you guys be able to promote that to like everyone's events too, within that? And we can promote. And we can promote, we can promote Earth Week, Road Runners After Dark. Not elections. Well, Food for Finals. And anything else?
I, I, I don't know, I can't think of anything else big coming for us, but maybe, oh.
That way we can promote four different events at the same time, and we won't have to collaborate with other people.
So just to clarify, are you still wanting to do the golf cart idea then and promote all of those events? If so, when? Are you looking like Monday, we don't have any less for Earth Week, they start on the twenty second, it looks like, which is Tuesday. And then go the rest of the week, so that might be a good day, um. And then are you still planning on doing fundraising at the same time?
Seems like there.
Cause it seems like a lot of stuff going on at the same time, and then are you still wanting to do like the raffle tickets at each of those events? Like, make sure there's the follow through, so like give out a ticket first, if they come up to our cart, follow us on Instagram. And then we just encourage them to take the flyers and let them know that if they attend those events, they'll have another chance to get a raffle ticket. So maybe instead of requiring them to take the flyers to get the ticket, it's just, here's a flyer, if you attend this event, you'll get another ticket.
It's already a beat in itself to get people to follow us on Instagram, so for to be, to get people sign up is just a whole different.
Yeah.
Or they'll sign up and not go.
Hence, hence the, they have to first follow us. And then, you know, proceed with that. Well, we, that's why the other initiative is also to receive Gatorades, snacks.
To get people's attention.
Yeah, and we have the music there, we can bring like a speaker. How Rowdy there, be the mascot, so grabs people's attention, just be, essentially just being, getting people's attention. Coming. We can do, looking at it, I think Monday or Tuesday would be best, no, either just before the start or at the start of.
Yeah, I think better to change the date to twenty first.
Is that a question?
Motion to state a friendly event for the twenty first.
I second that motion.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Perfect, we can adjust that, so you can do the twenty first. Um.
Yeah, hit that.
And then are you still wanting to do the fundraising then?
Yeah, it could be an option. Maybe they can get a raffle ticket, just one, if you donate.
So they can get three as well, I hear.
No, 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 either, either way, the maximum is two, I guess.
So want to follow us on Instagram, the second.
Donation.
Donation. And then encouragement of events coming up.
And then will, will we give them additional ones for attending events?
Oh yeah, I don't, I don't really know the way to track that.
Yeah, well, at, at first, at first, well, I was thinking it's just that we announce it. Which is why I'm literally thinking right now, cuz. The best way I see it is to be like a big set. We have, we hand out the tickets there at the events, so now they're aware. And in order to get. So people can follow us on Instagram and get like notifications of which event's gonna have, say. The raffle, like an additional notice, other than us putting out, they're like, hey, if you forget about this flyer or you lose it, whatever. Going on to Instagram page and, and the event will be there at these events, the raffles will be there. Right, so, so they don't, so we can just make it like they can get, instead of getting the tickets there, they can get the tickets at the event. You know what, does that make sense?
So don't do the raffle while you're golf carting, but just have the flyers for the events and have the donation one.
Oh, oh, no way, that's a.
Yeah.
I just have a better way, we give them a raffle and then they go to the event, hand us the raffle ticket.
Wait, what? Say that again, please?
So we hand them a raffle ticket. So like you follow us, so here's a ticket.
Right.
Turning the ticket into. Our events. You turn out a ticket at each event, it'll be counted into the official.
What's the incentive then to follow us?
Could get a drink. A free Gatorade. It's not free though. I have, I was just kidding, um, I don't like ice cream.
I don't know, I think that's getting a little too complicated.
Yeah, I agree.
So what, I think just giving them the raffle ticket, once they hit the follow button on the thing. And then we also split it and have it go into a little bin and then. At the end of the semester, we pick one out of the bin and then we. Put it on, yes, to grab them with the follow, this will be.
Yeah, either way, it'll be a lot of raffle tickets, no? Either way, we, we'll just like one person either way.
I mean, you, you put up, can we get one of those microphone things? Oh wait, no, there's a ordinance, right, sound ordinance potentially?
Yeah, but that reaches like high, the megaphone.
You like say free, not free, but like, I guess free, I don't know how to convince students.
Free parking pass.
Parking pass, and that's follow us on Instagram.
Yeah.
Instead of, uh, you could do follow on Instagram, but instead of like a, a physical ticket. You can just do like a Qualtrics or Microsoft Form where they just put their name, email and nine hundred number and call it a day. Or they just scan the QR code for that.
And then just hear how quickly they follow.
Exactly, and then for us, then on the backend, we can access all of that, and then if they fill it out more than once, they fill it out more than once, there's more entries, you know what I mean?
How do you?
What if, what if we had them, as soon as they followed us, we can send them like a DM photo. And a URL link to the Qualtrics.
Are these, you're saying get their, what, email?
They're already following you.
Oh, on Instagram?
Yeah. Already following you, just send it to them, everyone that has already followed you that day participated in. Then you get.
Are you verified people on Qualtrics, all of you on Instagram system?
Yeah, for their name.
Yeah.
Do you guys think we could like, within that, like the posts that we send them or like we send it to them, we could add that, URL, URL link?
I think it's getting too, too complicated if you put a Qualtrics survey, I literally think a raffle ticket is.
We should put a little stamp on it to make sure that's ours too.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if you wanna stamp each, I don't know how you wanna do that, yeah.
The raffle tickets come like this or connected.
Right. Okay, as long as you have those supplies.
Trying to get this passed today cuz it sounds like it's still in a very much like. Offline type of conversation point.
I, I would tend to agree, I am almost leaning towards we should.
Table it.
Table it, this should be more fully fledged out and presented at our meeting on Friday.
I agree with this.
Yeah. Then I would then, then I would like to have a follow-up PR meeting. Before the meeting, or like on Wednesday, to finish it out, because if everyone has these different ideas. And then it's just gonna leave it up to me again, we gotta come up with more questions. You know, better if like everyone started playing balls with it before you formally vote on it.
Um, well, then I motion to table this resolution to the meeting on Friday. Any objections? Any abstentions? Well, go ahead and make a PR meeting. Try and do it around people's schedules if that all possible, my schedule's a little crazy this week, um. We can try and fledge it out further and present it on Friday.
Then. Can we proceed with the agenda and vote on, um, the new budget items that we have? That the budget committee voted on today, reconciliation, so we can have the master budget updated and how show it what we actually have.
So when we approved the agenda, that was not mentioned.
I mentioned it.
I don't think it was, we did not land it in the resolution, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think we talked about approval for the new budget stuff from today.
And then for the reconciliation.
I will say from a constitutional standpoint. There is no president, whether he wants to add something to the agenda or not, there's nothing saying the constitution for a special session, we can't add. Uh, specifically for special session, right, um. I think it can get complicated though, I won't go that route. I don't think there's a president for special sessions where someone can motion add something on the agenda for a special session specifically. So, it just depends on how the council wants to handle Pat's suggestion.
Yeah, I would on it.
I just wanna refer to what Armand just said in the chat, a special session is just another meeting, there's not really guidance as to what. It's on besides, um, what you all decide, the business, which is business.
Is this business immediate?
The sooner we can approve these individuals funding, the better.
Oh, this is Mac?
Did, what were you putting for Mac or not?
So.
This is, this is for the, what we had this meeting today.
With a big club and the communications.
Graving cuz they're gonna have an inviting guest as well to consider that.
The debate one is a re- reimbursement anyways.
Well, what about the other one?
Sorry. The other one, says for the backside. And then the other's for the reconciliation.
Well.
If we don't do this today, what will be the consequences of not approving a special, that's my question.
For one of individuals is it is a reimbursement, and then for one of them, it's that they're going to be invited. Different and given out to individuals that participated with them. And to like, I think that I can understand.
I don't feel like you answered the question. I'll ask again, what would be the consequences if not?
There'll be another raise, I, to, for you, from your perspective as the chair. To my knowledge, this one isn't specifically like in. A specific date that they gave us on that's gonna be occurring. Which is why if we were to approve it today, the sooner they can get their funding. For what they're asking for. But if the council isn't inside, we can, but if not, the reconciliation would be.
Or any of these funding requests needed in the next two weeks.
Let me get that exact date for you, if not, what do you guys think about reconciliation at least?
Well.
For the update of the master budget?
I mean, as long as there's no serious consequence, no consequences, I would also. Think that Friday is a good time to. Go through it and pass it, but if you think there will be consequences, then I don't mind spending another ten minutes trying to pass it or whatever. It just depends on your. What do you think? Waiter, if it's like kinda emergency.
Well, this one specifically, I wouldn't say it's an emergency because it didn't pass specifically. But if we could do the master budget consideration, that one, I feel, cuz it, it came to my attention. That updating it is needed, so we, people can see what we actually have. So we can represent to, to this date, how, cuz this was supposed to be done last week. But we were able to get majority vote for, we had a majority vote today, so we can at least have that updated.
Yeah, I do remember some comments being made last meeting. I, is that it?
Yeah, I think that was.
That's a quick most, right?
That was a quick book cuz the budget committee already voted, we just need the council's approval.
So do we have motion for broadening something to the agenda?
I motion that we add the budget reconciliation to the agenda.
There are second.
Seconded.
Any objections? Any abstentions?
A motion to vote for a budget consideration.
Oh, that's, actually, I should present to this.
Motion has been laid, but.
Unless someone doesn't second it.
Oh yes, a motion to vote, a motion to vote.
Point of order, before we vote, will you say everybody what it is?
Yes.
What we're voting on?
Yeah, um, Brandon, keep on to master budget. The previous one that we usually always. No, it's just a master budget.
Here, I'll, I'll set it to you. Passed out.
Oh, thank you.
Very. Easter.
Okay.
Easter.
Okay, so as you guys can see, we have a total six thousand two hundred and five dollars and eight cents into our leadership development fund. That's what we've been using for like our, um, anything in our trips that we've been using it. That aren't aware, um, that's the one that we mainly use for when we have. Um, food that come into within our meetings, catering, everything that's T-SAC related for our leadership development, that's what we take it out of. So for a two lane trip specifically. It came out, this is what we adjusted for, for Tulane originally. However, a, the total for Tulane came out to eight thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty cents. So with taking, removing that from the leadership development fund, we have a leftover of negative. Two thousand five hundred and fourteen and twenty-two cents. So and within the budget committee, we decided to, um, re, uh, to reconsider the budget into removing. Three hundred dollars from sustainability committee, five hundred dollars from the PR committee. And remove that, and adding that to the leadership development fund, and then taking the remainder of that, which would be a. One thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-two cents from the rainy day fund. And that is the purpose of the bill, so it'll be removing from the leadership, from the PR. Sustainability and rainy day fund to make that. Cool.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Given the motions already been made, is there a second? Any objections on this reconciliation? Any abstentions? Perfect, the budget is reconciled. And then just make sure, ah, there's some of your proposals, but it's on the agenda for today's meeting. Um, without, is there any further business for this special session? Motion to end the meeting. Any objections? Any abstentions? Alright, bye.
The budget is.
Bye, see you guys.